Yeah, he's here. You know he's gonna be here?
He's over there, he's sitting there.
Oh, he didn't want to sit, okay. Dennis, you're number two. You'll be the second one to give a three-minute introduction of yourself.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to get started this evening. And thank you to everybody for out on this beautiful day here in Port Point. And we've told the finalists that came, the ones that came in from out of town, that the weather is always like this at Morgan's Point Resort, right? Huh? Yeah, Chamber Commerce weather, right? So, okay. It's always, it's always beautiful here. So, anyway, thanks to everybody for being here this evening. My name is Kent Myers. I am vice president of a company called Clear Career Professionals. Can everybody hear me? And we were hired by the city council here in Morgan's Point Resort to assess, assist the city in recruiting your new city manager. And it's been a real enjoying, enjoyment for us. You've got a great community, a lot of good quality of life, a lot of community input, a lot of volunteerism in here. So, we've really enjoyed working with the city over the last couple of months. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to facilitate the discussion this evening and tell you a little bit about what we're going to do over the next hour and a half. But first off, let me just kind of tell you what's happened the last couple of months here. So, you'll know as citizens what we've gone through to get to this point in the process. So, when we were hired about three and a half months ago, we met with the individual city council members, we met with city staff. We had, some of you were here when we had a meeting in this room. And the purpose of those discussions were to try to figure out what type of individual would fit in with the community. You know, we can find people that have the education and experience and other qualifications, but very important for us to understand the culture of your organization and the community and make sure that whoever we bring forward will fit into Morgan's Point Resort. Every city is unique and so we think that with the input we got from probably over 100 people, that we got a good feel for the type of person you'd like to hire as your next city manager. So, we started that process, we went out and did ads in different publications. Throughout the state of Texas, we focused within the state. And at the end of the application period, we received 32 applications. And that's, that's a pretty good response. Actually, a larger response than we get for most of our recruitments. And like I told the council today, that's a testament, I think, to the community and the quality you have here, the council, that you were able to attract 32 applications for your position. So, over the last couple of weeks, we've gone through those applications. We identified about a dozen of the 32 that met the qualifications as far as experience and education. And then we narrowed it down to six semifinalists who we, our company did video interviews. We actually interviewed six people on remote meetings and gave copies of the videos to the city council so they could watch it. And after we did the interviews of the semifinalists, the council selected three finalists who you will meet this evening for consideration for this position. So, I want to thank you to everybody who's participated in the process so far. You've got a great community, good city council. And also want to recognize your Ryan. He's one of the best things the city did when your previous city manager left, was bringing him on board to serve as your interim city manager. And he's done a wonderful job over the last couple. Let's give him a, yeah. So, the process this evening, we're going to go to 7:30. And we're going to cut this off at 7:30. And one of the, but feel free to hang around if you want to after that. But the reason we want to cut it off is we actually started this morning at 9:30. So, we've been, it's been a long day for the, under the city council and the candidates. And so, everybody's kind of feeling a little bit exhausted. So, we're going to go to 7:30. We're going to keep some time so that we don't get anybody with a long, drawn-out response to anything tonight, that we allow plenty of time for each of y'all to ask your questions. So, we've got a timekeeper. And what we're going to do is we're going to allow each of the candidates to introduce themselves for three minutes, up to three minutes. And then following that, and they've drawn, drawn numbers to determine their order. And then we're going to open up for questions from the audience. The city council's already asked all their questions and interviews today. So, we want to hear from the audience. And you can either direct your questions to one of the candidates, you can direct your questions to all three, it's your preference. Just ask the candidate, give them two minutes, up to two minutes to respond to each questions. And once again, we'll be keeping the time. So, and then we're going to probably try to stop the questions about 7:20. That way, we can allow the candidates to make any closing comments. I think it'd be good to hear from you the last 10 minutes of them, maybe give them the opportunity to say anything they want to say, okay? So, we had Shawna draw the number one. So, at this point, she will introduce herself for up to three minutes. And then we'll let Dennis and then Taryn. So, Shawna?
It's so nice to meet you. I am coming from Bay City, which is down, sorry, let me pull it up.
You have to be very close.
Okay, we'll try this again. I'm coming from Bay City in the Matagorda, Houston area. And my husband is with me, David. And we have been married 11 years. And I have been in the city for about 20 years in all aspects of municipal government. And so, this is a career field that I just adore. I love seeing projects go from the thought process to, and seeing it all the way through, seeing projects all the way through. So, I come to you with about 20 years of experience. I've served all over Texas, from Casterville, Jacksboro, the San Antonio area, Converse, and most recently, Lamisa and Bay City. So, I've served in communities such as San Antonio, very large, and all the way down to very small cities. But most of the cities have been between 3,000 and 17,000 population. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dennis Baldwin. I come from the city of Colleen, that's where I reside. Just a quick little bio here. I was born and raised in Missouri. I came, I went in army at a very early age. And I ended up at Fort Hood where I got out and started working as a police officer for the city of Colleen. And I spent 35 years in total with the city, of which the first 33 years was in law enforcement. I was the police chief for about 12 years. And about 385 officers, about a $30 million budget. And then we went from there. I went to city hall to help out during an interim phase. It was supposed to be seven days, turned out to be four months. And so, but we did find our replacement for the previous city manager. And from there, I was looking at retiring. I decided to stick around for a couple more years as a request of the city as their assistant city manager. So, there I worked operationally. I had 13 direct reports, all city departments, operationally answered to me. And then the city manager dealt with council. And we worked together on strategic issues together. And I wanted to spend more time with family, specifically my mother and my wife and kids too. But my mother was getting up there in years. And so, I did do that and don't regret it, it was a good decision. And then after just a few months, the city asked me to come back for a while. So, I came back as assistant city manager to help them get a new city manager. Did that. And then I went back in retirement and got a little boring. My wife said I was cramping her style. So, I said, okay, I got that. So, I started doing a little consulting work on the side. And short, long story short, it got to the point where it was just a little too boring for me. I wasn't cut out mowing grass, I figured that out, she did too. So, I went more into consulting and I ended up helping out a city up around Dallas, Duncanville, and helped them as a finance manager for a while. I got done with that, came back in December. And I saw this advertised, figured that would be something I'd like to do. I have a boat parked out here, I like the community, I know you all, I know the community well, not individuals. So, I'm looking forward to the process. And I think regardless of what happens, I think you're all going to be fine no matter what happens.
Same on? Because today when I showed up in a suit, there's a lot of people that said, hey, you don't look like yourself. And that's true. You've seen me here in a white shirt. And I actually had Bob Reinhardt, our county emergency management coordinator, one time called me on a meeting and say, you're not wearing shorts? So, I'm kind of a blue collar guy, I'm a jeans and t-shirt guy, I'm not really this. But there's a lot more to me probably than many of you guys may know. And I hope to kind of share some of that with you tonight. I started with the city in 2017. I was recruited and hired as the first battalion chief over training. And it's something the council put together with the then-chief, John Phillips. Providentially, I was working for Scott and White EMS where I'd been for two years. And they happened to be closing unfortunately at the end of October in 17, or beginning rather. And by virtue of having background in training, education, and teaching with UT Southwestern, the Austin Fire Department, or as a battalion medical instructor and adjunct faculty at MCC, where I still serve on the adjunct faculty, Southwestern, the Austin Fire Department, or as a battalion medical instructor and adjunct faculty at MCC, where I still serve on the adjunct faculty in the EMS education program, I was cut out for that position. A few months later, John left. And my other background involves the restaurant industry and some of it's overlapped. I was with Truluck Steak and Stone Crab for 12 years, which is unrelated as that may sound to city service. You guys are here for service, right? You're here for customer service and you're here for someone that can provide that. A very strong background in delivering that. I was a general manager with a jazz club in the Dallas area. And I served as assistant manager with a couple of other chains as well. Most of my experience with management, human resources, and leadership has been in those two industries. So, this is a new branch out for me. I am the one that comes to the table with not the same experience. But I believe that my experience that I have to offer the city is unique to the city. The city likes to say it's unique and it is. So, that's something I want to explore with everybody. I would not be here today because I'll tell you, I've had five bosses. We've all been here, right? I've had five bosses in the seven years I've been here. The fire department's had three chiefs, three paid chiefs in 15 years. So, I know that the, my neck might be a little bit more intact, a little less Henry VIII if I stay at the fire department. But I believe that what I have to offer the citizens here is worthy, something you guys deserve, something the city deserves. I believe in transparency and accountability and it's not just lip service. You are welcome to talk to anyone I work with in the city, anyone of our department. I get along with a lot of people. And I know we have a lot of different folks in the city. In my experience as your fire chief, I've been to every neighborhood. I know we have all manner of walks of life, all manner of income in this, in this city. And we have a need for someone that understands that and can bring everyone together and keep things moving down the road in a positive and productive way. And that's why I'm here. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, now you've heard the introduction of the candidates. One thing I forgot to mention is our company has done background checks on all three of the finalists, including their education, work experience. We've done social media checks. So, you guys all passed. So, so I want everybody to know that, that we, one of the services we provide is providing, is making those checks. So, that is the introduction. So, at this point, we want to open it up to questions from the audience. And we ask that you come to the podium to ask your questions. And then if you want to direct them to any certain individual or you want to just ask all three of them, that's okay too. So, who wants to go first? Don't be bashful. Okay, thank you. Okay, I see some of y'all are just kind of sitting back now and anxious to ask a question. And I know we had a lot of input when we were here before. So, I know that y'all are not bashful. One, two, three. Yeah, that one worked. You want to do that again, Don? Yeah, okay. You have to go to the podium, the only thing you have to do is go to the podium because we are filming, we're video.
I'm verifying that there was an issue with the live stream, but I think, is it up already?
Okay. So, you can be a TV starter now. Who wants to go? All right, here we go. Get it started.
Mike Anken's Tannard Road, Morgan's Point. You can start on the left, one, two, three, and tell us what, how you feel about your relationship between the city council yourselves and the managers in different departments.
Okay, I've only been here for a day. So, I would say that from what I can observe, the city council interacts very well with one another. It looks like they are working as a team, which is important. I can say the same thing about, from what I observe from the department heads. And I think that's, that's, that's a good foundation to start. Whether, who your city manager is going to be is having a team that can, across the board, from city council and staff, to be able to communicate and have open, transparent dialogue to address some of the challenges you're all, you're all facing and to manage the city moving forward. So, from my perspective, it looked pretty good.
After meeting with staff this morning and also with city council, both showed exactly the same camaraderie and team spirit, if you will, that comes with leading a city forward into the future. And what really stood out was that staff really has the concerns of the public in mind, as well as the concerns of city council, which are one in the same. And they express them very well, express their thoughts very well. They are concerned about communication, open lines of communication, having that, I'm sorry, I'm missing a word that I'm looking for. But having that thorough correspondence, if you will, with each other and not letting seeds of controversy or distrust or any type of scenario that might exist, to let it exist. But they want to address it and hit it head-on. And they, they were very diligent to express that to us. And so, I was very impressed that everybody has the goodwill of the city and the express intent to serve the city to its best capacity, to their best capacity. And I was just impressed by that.
Miss Anken, I hope I understood your question correctly because I have a little different take on the response. I think the question was pertaining to how do we view that relationship, what it should look like? And if I'm wrong, okay, forgive me. It looks like I'm right. I think at the end of the day, everyone on this side of the table, we're all public servants or have been public servants. And we cannot forget that. That's been the case for the better part of over two decades of my life. The way I not only understand it, the way I know it to be, is that our city council, this city council, prior city councils, future city councils, they're here because they were elected and they are the voice of everyone out here on the other side of the table. I'm very aware of that. And that's true, in the fire service, we're called to take care of certain types of events, typically emergencies. We don't work for the fire, we work for the people that call us. And I think it's really important to keep that in focus. How do we translate that between the wishes of you guys, the city council and department heads? That's where the city manager, manager part comes in. I stood up there at the podium maybe five, six months ago and said, what this city needs is a manager, not a leader. And that's true, but it's, it's like anything, there's a little bit of truth to both sides. What the city needs and what I do, manage projects, manage expectations, but I can lead people to make those things come together and be successful. I've been able to do the fire department and that's my belief is that the city council, when I get my marching orders, it's not my duty to come back and provide anything other than advice, direction, some opinion, know what chills to die on and know what chills not to die on. And there's not a lot to die on because again, I work for y'all. I've had a couple of people ask, is that me and you are yes men? No, I'm not a yes man. You guys that have been around also know that I'll get up here and passionately argue with you. But I will do so in a way that's very positive, constructive. And I think that's my role as a manager leader. I think beyond that, one thing I can tell you, like the 24 work plan, we've got some great strategies out there, we have some action steps. We have no tasks associated with action steps. And my job as the city manager is to network with the department heads and make sure that the tasks are assigned out and they've got two-way feedback so that I can come back and report with clarity to y'all as the public and to the city council that those things are getting done and we're carrying that football a bit further down the field.
Okay, thank you. So, who wants to ask question number two? And again, as Dorothy mentioned, we'll accept questions from the staff also if you'd like to ask questions. So, okay, next.
All right, Denise Seibert, 114 Great West Loop. What kind of city events or community events or outreach has have you initiated in the past or are looking to do in a small community?
Okay, let's start with, let's start with the second candidate, I'm sorry. Shawna. And we'll, we'll switch it around so you'll take turns going first.
Certainly.
Okay.
So, community events, I can start with. We have 7,000 people that attended our Chicken Fried Steak Festival, which was the largest festival in Lamisa. That was regularly attended and we ran that for three days over a weekend. So, from there, we have done MS bike marathons in Lamisa, which brought in 3,000 people to our community, had all the hotels booked because of all of the bikers in the marathon, or bike race, however they choose to phrase that. And so, I've, I've done festivals and events such as that in multiple cities. And most recently, in Bay City, we have our festival, Camo Fest. Camo Fest brings about 5,000 people to our downtown area. We bring in vendors for wild game, as well as wineries, and have had great turnouts. We've even done events for libraries. So, any number of different types of fundraising events. I've worked with organizations within the community to pull off events, to assist in those events. We have a parade that the Lions Club does every year. And so, that takes a good 7,000 people and brings them into our downtown area once a year for the rice festival. And so, I've had quite a few experiences with that.
All right, so locally, if you've been to community events, you know that we do community events. So, that kind of goes without saying. There's some events we do just by virtue of being the fire department, you know, different dinners and public safety events, wildfire events, stuff like that. The other thing that we do is a little bit unique, I don't know if Pam Robinson's here or not. We do the library reading hour every year, we've been invited to do that. We've just put together an interesting library project this year to kind of dovetail with that, with some opportunities for kids to do some research and get a prize at the library, something we're going to try this year. So, we, we network out with other departments outside of the city. And I mean happy I could go into, if you've been to the Fourth of July event, that's, Councilman Snyder's, one of his things he likes to put on, we of course are up with. If you don't know, there's a 5K coming up this week in JoJo Gisman. We got 214 people coming to our fair city, which would be the biggest race, 220, I think we ever had here. So, and I've been involved with all those. I think it'd be more fair if we talked about some of our global events. When I was, when the Miracle Match Marathon was taking place in Waco, we did a 10-year stint in Waco, I was directly involved with that event. And that brought in over 3,500 people to the city of Waco. I was involved in the medical capacity and providing volunteer work and leadership and coordination for that. I do some of those events with MCC as well, with bringing in Aero Medical and doing tours of aircraft. And we put on a lot of community events just like right here in the city. So, that's a big part of who we are as a community. That's a big part of, I think, my on-the-job interview that you've seen over the last five or six years. Hopefully, I've had high marks in that. But I'll tell you that the community events are the thing that keeps the community together. We saw what happened during COVID, both within our department, with this community, when we weren't able to spend time together. And that's where we got to go back to, you know, being a nice, close-knit community. Our green space, our parks, the traditions we have, the Santa tradition. I can, I could go on and on, I know we have a limited time tonight, so I won't. But yes, community, the event is what brings us out of our homes. We work hard to be in our homes, we work hard to be comfortable. But community events, what brings us out and maintains that sense of community, which allows us to be the thriving community we are.
Of course, a lot of you know where Colleen's at. And it's next to a large military installation, Fort Cabasos, formerly known as Fort Hood. And with that proximity to the fort, there is an enormous amount of community outreach and/or public events that are one way or another connected with either Fort Hood or the surrounding communities. That said, as far as bringing something in, we've brought in a half marathon. That was a major turnout. It's a big event, took a long time in planning. That was something that we definitely felt good about. It was a success. And I think they even ran pretty much, probably all halfway over here because it was such a, like a half marathon. So, it was, it was definitely a challenge for the runners, participants. But it's also for the security and aspect of it. And that's, at that time, I was a police chief. But we do a lot of community events and that is from the Colleen standpoint. When I went up to Duncanville around Dallas, they didn't have a military installation. So, it was more of using what you have. And not that I developed, because I didn't. We facilitated their events from a department head standpoint at that time. And that was more community-oriented. And of course, surrounding communities, DeSoto, different, different communities in that Cedar Hill, they would come and participate in there. But it was basically a Duncanville show because they had a unique park. If you've ever been to Duncanville, they have a beautiful park. It's a, it's phenomenal. And just like you have some phenomenal things right here, that could be a destination. Obviously, you don't want to disrupt that home life, that, that quality of life you have. But you definitely want to capitalize from that. The more you do that, the less you're relying on the, on the tax base going up. You can share that cost with visitors, if you will. So, you've got a lot to work with here. What that vision is depends on council. But as a facilitator, city manager, whether it's me or anybody else, their job is to get you, get that city council where they're going to capitalize off that community involvement to include the community outreach. Because I think they kind of go hand in hand.
Thank you, candidates. So, next question.
Hi, my name is Denise Fantetti and I live on Cliffside Circle. I love this community. I moved here because it's a small community, it's great people. And I'm just wondering what each of your visions are going forward in the community?
Okay, we'll let Taryn answer this first.
I think, I'm going to answer your question. The real, the truth is, it's not my vision, it's your vision. My vision is to help you meet that vision, whatever that is and however diverse that is and however many different iterations of that happen over the time I'm here, if I'm selected. For me personally, if I was to say, I'm going to take my fire chief hat off and I'm a resident. And what I would envision for this community is that we continue to have managed growth. It sounds like a buzzword, but it's the truth. We have growth coming in towards us off 3/17. We have growth coming in towards us off 317, we've got growth coming off Adams. There's no telling what will happen in the Moffett area in the years to come as well. We don't want to be an island where nothing's changed. I mean, and I say we almost, I think I can pretty collectively confidently say that about all of us, but also the reason we're here in Morgan's Point is because it's not Dallas, it's not Houston, it's not Temple. When I drive in on 317, I look over and I see rooftops, and they look like the same rooftop for miles. No offense if you've got a rooftop over there, but I grew up in a different community. The community I live in now, all the homes are built in the 20s and 30s. I love that. So I think there's something to be said for protecting the history and the culture of a community. I think if we wanted to come in here and do any major changes, and I've seen that push through, and I know it's not welcome, you know, huge conference center, a high-rise hotel is probably not the right move here, but doing something where we can interface and capture some of that progress from Temple. I know there's some plans that were drawn up, grand plans, and I've looked at them, they look great in that public safety center area to provide, you know, some coffee shops and retail and stuff that's kind of low-key, gives places for you all to go and have your third place, you know, besides home and work to go spend time. And I think that's positive, that goes back towards community. But I don't think we're talking about anything huge. I mean, we want to be on top. The other thing we've got to look at is the finance behind that. I mean, right now, if you look at the triangle that represents how we take in our revenue stream, it's almost all you guys, the burden is on your shoulders as taxpayers that own homes in the community. It'd be great to make that a complete upright triangle. We've got a great sales tax and some other things going on. That'll come in time. It'll never be an equilateral triangle, it's just not what the community has set out to do. But if we can find ways to capture that revenue in a way that's responsible, provides higher quality of life for you guys, and whatever that looks like, is great. So that's what I would say as far as, you know, where I would see this going. Some other smaller projects, you know, we look around the green space. I know the talk this week has been Anne Say Park, where part of the Jungle Dem fell down. I'll tell a story real quick. My mom, who's sitting right here, got me tickets for an event in Dallas at the Arboretum for my 51st birthday. And I went, and when I walked into the Arboretum and I realized, and I went with her when I was a little kid, she turns, I won't tell you, she's older than me now, but we may not get the chance to go back there together in this lifetime, and I tell you, it brought a tear to my eye and it's something I share with the council, and that's the guy's honest truth. The green space, the ways we interact and the development we need to keep in that because it is so important to what kids will become, who will become people, residents of this community and other communities, we've got to protect that too. And that may not be a revenue generator, but man, that's a personality generator, and that's something that makes life worth living. So we've got to look at those things. And there's some things we can do that are interesting. We could do some smaller structures that are storm shelters, that are dual-purpose community event centers, that are, you know, open pavilions for parties and stuff. Nothing grand, nothing, you know, extreme, but something that we get good mixed use out of and possibly some grant funding to help cover as well.
Okay, Dennis, a vision?
Sure. I, I think ultimately the vision, and it's kind of, not to not answer your question, but I want to put it in perspective. Any kind of growth within a city is, should be based on a comprehensive plan, because there's so much involved. There's zoning, there's plating, there's the type of buildings you want to see built. You don't want to lose, I'm sure, your hometown charm. In fact, you want to enhance it, but at the same time, you don't want just developers to come in and encroach upon what they have and just slap something up. I say slap, you've got nice homes here, but it needs to be planned out, and that's where the community's vision collectively is brought in under one umbrella to say, this is where we're going and this is how we're going to manage our growth. Every city needs one. A lot of times, cities don't keep up on their comprehensive plan where it's updated properly. So if it's not been updated, it needs to be updated or needs to be just a fresh look at it with the latest trends and concepts that are new today in development in cities. That said, the vision should really come from that comprehensive plan that's got the input of the citizens. City council obviously have a role in that. City manager's job is to facilitate it. As far as the, the, how it will turn out, I can tell you, your comprehensive plan is based on your capacity in many ways, capacity of your financial abilities to pay for any future development, infrastructure. A lot of people say, well, we want, I'm not saying you all do, they want business, they want manufacturing. Well, they don't realize, they probably don't have the water rights to do that, because if they don't have water, you're not going to, the only thing you're going to do is take it away from the citizens if you put a manufacturing plan in. So I'm not saying all of them, I'm saying generally speaking. So your infrastructure, water, sewer, drainage, your, your capacity for growth financially to issue debt, things like this, all depends on your financial ability, and that's where it all starts. And city council's well aware of it, I think the community probably is as well, but having that as a starting point, making sure your comprehensive plan's there, and collectively decide what your future's going to be. It shouldn't be a city manager, it shouldn't be anyone's city council member or anyone community member driving that. It should be a collective effort to get you where you want to go. Ultimately, you don't want to lose the charm, I'm sure, but you definitely don't want to keep everything static, and as costs of services and goods go up, your taxes go up, and you've got the same thing you had years prior. So there's got to be a way to find that sweet spot to where you're allowing growth, but it's planned growth.
Okay, Shawna.
I would first say, I don't want to spend a lot of time repeating many of these same concepts because they are integral to how a city manager initiates that vision, initiates it from the goals and objectives and vision statement that this council lays out to actually following through and leading that charge. And so the first thing I would say is, my vision for the, for the community would be to provide that stability, whether it be for the current staffing, the financial stability, provide that to the, to obviously the residents as well as city council, to ensure that that is always in the forefront of our minds. And then developing that out to visions for, you know, park spaces, green spaces, anything that can be multipurpose, such as this facility, what a great facility you have here. Having those opportunities to listen to the community and have those events where I'm actually listening to you as well as the city council is listening to you and hearing what you want. That is certainly our desire as city managers. We certainly don't want to have a specific vision for a community if it doesn't fit, and certainly I just want to facilitate that process.
Okay, thank you. So far, we've had some great questions from the audience, and who wants to go next? Okay, thank you. We've got this gentleman, and then we'll do the woman in the back row, the next.
My name is Larry Gossett. I live in, on Sugarfoot Drive, I've been out here in Morgan's Point since 1975. I know you've talked to the staff and council and everything, and as soon as it came up that you had been one of the finalists, you think started rolling in your mind. My question is, what will be your first plan of action once you are, have been hired for city manager?
Okay, first plan of action. Dennis?
Yes, the first thing I would do is, is kind of a part A, part B. Part A would do an assessment of the city to see exactly where you are financially, operationally, and ensure, look at all the plans you have already in place, whether they're dated or contemporary, and see where the baseline is. And from there, part B of that same thing, while that's being done, the department heads will be working on a presentation to provide my office to, give me an overview of their particular department, the things they think is important to them from their perspective, because who knows better than the department heads about what they do? And get that assessment from them, their financial understanding of the budget, what they have, give the strategic issues that are significant to them, major issues, challenges, and bring those to my attention at the same time. Once I get the baseline, I think that's where the next start would, the phase would be of starting implementing change based off of dialogue with council and basically coming up with a plan, what to do first in the next 90 days, and secondary like that.
Okay, Shawna.
Certainly. I think the first 30 days is simply getting a handle on what the current financial situation is for the, for the city and the community, and what we have currently, what we have currently in place, reviewing all the budgetary decisions that were made for this fiscal year, reviewing any budget development that has been done for the future, next year's budget. Also, meeting with department heads individually, seeing what they need in terms of fixed asset replacement, that's all of their equipment, rolling stock, what years those need to be replaced in, even down to facilities, to make sure that everything is adequate to provide the service that is expected. And so assessing all of that is going to be my first priority within that first 30 to 60 days. Presenting what I've found to city council is my second step, and the third step would be digging in with city council and establishing the plan of work for each month.
Taryn?
Well, as far as the current budget, clearly we're already, what, eight months through it, or we're getting pretty close to being, already talking about the 25 budget. We run a 10-year budget, Fire Rescue runs through 2032 currently, we forecast through that. That's probably ambitious for the size of budget and the different nuances of a city versus a one department. I'm going to come back to that thought, though, to echo what my other candidate, you know, counterparts up here have said, we've got to find a baseline, we've got to find the bottom of the pool. I don't mean that in a negative way, but we have to find where we're starting from, and that will start with getting a briefing and update from everybody involved, starting with department heads, council, and most importantly, our interim city manager, who's been in that job role now for months and can provide some needed intel and insight. Of course, there's the logistical things, the keys turned over, passwords and stuff like that, that goes without saying. We just completed a 360 survey. We looked comprehensively at the leadership team for the fire department, myself obviously included, and the culture of the fire department. And I will tell you, the results were great. Some weren't flattering, and that's okay. It's good to find your weak spots and find things that may have been miscommunicated. That survey has been very, very good to us. It's a survey that I intend to put out through every department head to their subordinates so we can get a good gauge. And this isn't a gotcha or an aha moment, or trying to catch him by knowing something wrong, it's, we're going to catch you doing something right, but we also want to know from a snapshot in time, what does it look like right now? Not just the big picture, not just the financials, not just what do we think of what's going on City Hall, but what's actually happening with the boots on the ground? Because to come back to the budget discussion, the biggest question I have is what's working and what's not. Fuel mitigation would be an excellent example. We feel very good about our fuel mitigation program. We're spending probably, I haven't looked at it granularly, I'd assume around $100,000 between salary trucks and all that stuff. It's obviously a good program, but is it doing what it's intended to do? Are we clearing fuels out of the city? Yes. Are we clearing them out from points that we're, we need to clear them out from? We don't know. And BJ and I have already spoken about this in the context of the Fire Rescue Department and the Maintenance Department. Those are some of the things you've got to figure out, if the money you guys have allocated for us to spend is even being spent in a way that makes sense. And so once we do that, we'll begin immediately planning for the 24, rather, the 25, 26 budget with that in mind, which is basically in step with what these guys have said as well. So that's the main thing, and then we just have to go back out and find out where we're at with public opinion, with what's working with the community. I know there's been some new things implemented for, like the text, Text My Gov. I know it's been out there for a little bit, but it's starting to pick up some traction, the Code Red campaign, there's some different interactive things. My observation over the years is that two-way communication has been problematic, and that's true in every community, but here we have, you know, some folks that want a newsletter, tangible hard copy newsletter, we've got some folks that want it as a text, we've got people that want it as an email, and we've got to figure out a way to accommodate everybody so that communication gets shared. And then, of course, it's important to go back in and update our council and update you guys through the council as to what we found and what we're planning to do moving forward. I'm not a efficiency person where I just look at the black and white. I look at the culture of the organization. Maybe there's some things that aren't easily explained, I know you'll find that in my department. I intend to spend time with each department head and find out, what are the things that make your department different? What am I, what might I look at on paper that stands out to me in my life experience, my career experience, and I go, hey, that doesn't look right? But then I talk to them and I find out, actually, that makes a lot of sense, because they are the subject matter experts on their job. So I've got to find what that looks like first. From there, I don't think there's going to be, having one of the home field advantages is, there doesn't necessarily need to be a honeymoon period, I mean, there'll be some transitional stuff. One of the things I'll have to tackle is replacing myself. I already have a contingency plan in place for that, and we've already spoken with a, I've spoken with a fire chief that is known at the community, that would be willing to come in here and do it for a temporary time until we can have a better solution, and it's a good workable solution. So lots of work to do, but lots of fun work to do, and kind of a cool time to get in and do it. We're planning for what's coming up in 25. The fixed asset replacement's going to be a big deal. That's been off the books for a few years now, and we're starting to have some aging equipment across the city, so those will be the high points. And then audits, I'm going to throw the audits out there. We know we just got a draft audit back, and so it's probably in a month's time, that'll be complete, finalized hopefully, and then by June, we'll have 22, and then 23 by November. I may be off of my dates, but I know we've got progress, and I know that our finance department is working on that, so oversight on that. One last thing I'll share with you, the way I do work, I send five points out to everybody every pay period that are your two-week focus. They have to do specifically with their job function, and then I check back with them. And that's what I do with my boots on the ground, so I can communicate back and forth, and you can anticipate that type of communication taking place between City Hall and everybody from, you know, City Hall on down to the folks that are digging ditches or putting out fires.
Okay. I think the woman in the back row had a question for the group.
Hi, Lynn Milam, 28, Morgan's Point Boulevard. I would like to know what your particular management styles are, especially related to staff.
Okay, management style. I think, Shawna, you get to go first on this one, don't you?
Sure. First, I do not micromanage. I have a very open leadership style. I use basic high-performance organization management theory. I believe that everybody brings four things, four things to the table that are important. Every employee must have management skills to manage their time, manage their workload. They need to be a leader. They need to show leadership to not only their department, but also throughout the organization. Certainly, team skills, team skills, they have to have that. And of course, specifically their task or task orientation, whatever that specific area is, they must show competencies in those. I, I use an approach that is not used by all, and that is that I try to bring one person from frontline to mid-level managers to the department heads together to work on different projects, certainly so that we can get, and it could be multiple, not just three or four, but, so I can get a different perspective and I can get people working together that take people outside of their department, where they may be stove-piped, and bring them into the broader discussion of organizational issues.
Management style.
So if you want to boost my ego and give me the two biggest compliments you can give me, when you see me at the fire station and I'm in shorts and t-shirt, ask where the fire chief's at. Right? And then when you see me up here, tell me I'm doing a good job running the fire department as the fire chief. My management style is a blue-collar management style. I'm down there, I'm willing to work, boots on the ground, arm-in-arm with people, and it doesn't matter what the job is. One of the things the department heads asked about, what would life look like? And if you've seen Undercover Boss, I won't be the undercover boss, but I do intend to spend a day in the field with each department a month. So not all departments in one month, but each month, choose a department, spend a day, whether it's putting in water valves, looking over my shoulder, doing, doing work, because I have to know their jobs, because my expectation of the folks that work under me is that they know my job. The reason we're in a good place with the individual that's my number two, where he could actually be considered for this job, is because we've worked very hard together over the last three or four years to give him that ability. That's the same philosophy I'm going to have with anybody in the city. We've talked, the department heads and I have talked at length about that with some of the ideas with education, maybe some incentive programs, you know, to help people get engaged and learn the next step up. At one point, we're all going to leave. Somebody asked me earlier today, well, what happens? How are you going to handle it when you hire a new fire chief and it's not quite the way you would do things? And I'll tell you, I worked at about four or five different fire stations in Austin over the years, and if you go back to them, guess what's going on right now? They're still running calls and fighting fires and going to calls and stuff like that. I'm not the end-all-be-all if you hire me, I'm not the forever person if you hire me. I've got to realize that my time here and all our time here is transient. It may be 10 years, it may be two months, it's up to you. But we've got to recognize that people only here, in our lives and in this, in this work environment for a limited amount of time. We have to give them as much as we can to build them up and move on, and our department, 25 strong, has lost 18 people over the last five years. And our department, 25 strong, has lost 18 people over the last five years to other departments. That's a good thing. They left to go somewhere. We built those individuals up. Many of them came in right out of the military or community kids who were 17, 18, turned 18 and said, hey, want to do this? We put them through fire school. We got a couple of years of service out of them, and now they're out fighting a fire in higher heights or somewhere else. We can do that for every single job function in this city. Whereas the utilities department, making sure that Jesse's got backup if he's out sick for an extended period of time, the same level of certification to keep our water systems running and healthy. If for some reason Chief Schutze is incapacitated for a while, that Lieutenant Hodge is able to step in. I can confidently say that. I know our two departments very well. My biggest learning curve will be City Hall, utilities and maintenance. But we have good relationships there. I believe that we're friends at the end of the day, but there's a time to step up and lead, and there's a time to be friends, and those things can work together, but the friendship can't trump the leadership when it comes down to public service, it just can't.
Dennis, what's your management style? Sure. I guess the best way to sum it up is I have a participative management style where I do value the input of others. Quite frankly, I've said this before, but I look at the local government, you just can't have anything operate in a vacuum. You have to have open dialogue, communication, but you also have to have trust and transparency among all stakeholders, but that includes your department heads. And my value placed upon them is significant because they are the subject matter experts, but I also know that not everybody comes to the table with the same skill sets. I don't have all the answers, no one in this room does, but at the same time collectively we can. If I find that there are some skill sets that are not where they really need to be, I'm willing to make that personal investment in coaching and staff development to get them where they need to be in order to accomplish the goals and objectives that the city council has out there for us. But I look at it as a collaborative effort. I don't wear my title. I look at my role as a facilitator. Obviously, if some kind of hiccup came along the way and we had to use the title, that's different. But I don't walk around with that. I've looked at trying to get a collaborative environment, and to get that, I think you've got to be able to have that open, unfiltered access to your staff to where we can ever kind of work on the same projects together. Okay, we're getting some great questions this evening. Thank you to everybody. And who wants to ask the next question? I know that, I think we may have one or two questions from the city council if we run out of questions on the audience. Okay, yes?
They all know me. Joelle Guzman, a lot of people know me, by JoJo, 22, Will and Run. I have a quick question for all of you all because I've been here since 1994. So I've come across a lot of city managers over the years that have come and go and come and go. So my question to you is, as a resident, what is going to be your open door policy or closed door policy? How are you going to treat us as residents? You know, if we come to you with a question or a thought or a vision for an event or anything like that, what are your going, how are you going to end up treating us? And I mean, I know that you all are putting your best foot forwards, but you know, transparency. So it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, so treatment and handling of residents. Taryn, do you want to start that response?
You can expect, I mean, I work for you. That's true today, and it'll still be true tomorrow, no matter what the outcome is. So my door is always open and not just in the figurative sense, but in the literal sense. I don't have anything on my window, anything to block anything out, you know, and there's needs for privacy sometimes, but that is intended when you walk by my office to be a sign that is welcome, you're welcome to come in and talk. And we do a lot of that. I've done a lot of that with members of the community. I've done a lot of that with members of our department. I have had 3:00 AM talks with people going through crisis in their life in that office. I can't guarantee you, if you call me at 3:00 AM as your city manager, I'm going to come down and talk about your marital problems. I'm probably not qualified to do that. But I can tell you that if you want to come in and talk, we're going to do that. I think, I've looked at a couple of different scheduling options. One of the things that kind of mystifies me is the City Hall schedule. It's not real conducive of coming home after work and meeting with anybody when it ends at 4:00. Now, that doesn't mean the city manager's bound to leave at 4:00, but I will probably work some staggered days or maybe later in time, later out time where we consciously say, these are evenings where I'm available because I know you're not. Or Saturdays, there may be some time like that. I enjoy a little bit of flexibility in the schedule. Of course, I'll be committed to work in, you know, your Monday through Friday schedule, but some of that's just adapting. You can expect to be treated with nothing but dignity, mercy, respect, grace, you know, inquisitiveness. If you've got something you want to talk about, we'll explore those things together. You know, I'm here to serve you, and that's just the way things work in this position. I think you'll find that I'm friendly, approachable, I'm not afraid to innovate. I'm also not afraid to tell you no and tell you this is why, and I'm also not afraid to let you tell me, but you're wrong and here's why. Now, there's a point where we probably need to curtail that conversation and move on, but I enjoy that. I enjoy, I'm a people person. I think y'all probably have gathered that from the time I've been here. So what you've seen up to this point in time is what will continue with this office, so thank you.
Thank you, Taryn. Let's go to Dennis. Next, treatment and handling of residents. Right. Accessible is the key word, not only for me but the staff. It's important to set the example, so the city manager's office should be the one that sets that example, but making sure we're accessible to the community. Not only that, there's going to be a lot of things going on that you all need to be aware of as a community, city council. Obviously, there's meetings that's, not everybody can make those meetings or view them later on or watch them later on. So what I find to be very useful is, and it doesn't have to be done quarterly, although that's how I started mine when I was in City Colleen, is to have community forums where the staff comes in and they let, well, first of all, it would be elected officials and the city manager's office, generally speaking, that appear before the community where we just have a discussion about what's been going on. We exchange information, ideas, concerns, and that's recorded and grabbed for staff to work on, sometimes right there during the meeting, because department heads would be a part of that discussion. And that's a good exchange of information. And so a lot of these things, while there might be a lot to start with, the more community forums you do, a lot of these issues being addressed, hopefully, there'll be less on why isn't the city doing this as opposed to what is the, we can start doing things that's beneficial to the community that you may or may not get at this stage. And I'm not here to say you have or haven't, but there are certain department heads that have certain things that they can convey to you to make your quality of life better. It could be recycling. I don't know what it will be, the topic will be, but those department heads can come during those community forums and do presentations, still allow that opportunity for that exchange of information, ideas, dialogue to occur as well. So that's, but yes, accessibility, but also planned meetings to where there's open dialogue. Okay. Shawna, tell us about how you handle the treatment and handling of residents.
First, my door is always open. Most of the time, if a citizen comes into the office and someone is in my office that may be staff, I might put that discussion on hold for a moment and try to answer a question. If it seems to be a longer time period, I might schedule a timeframe in the very near future with you, whether it be that morning, afternoon or evening. But certainly, I always am trying to answer the citizens first because I will always see staff. And there are urgent times where staff needs your attention, but most of the time, the citizens need to be first. And so I take that into consideration. Certainly, we have had community forums, but I tend to get out and walk around. I do neighborhood strolls. We did those the day before council and walk around the neighborhoods, establish that with the communications coordinator for the city, put out signs in each neighborhood, wherever you may be doing a stroll, and spend an hour with staff, department heads primarily, and myself, as well as city council that may want to attend, and stroll your neighborhood and speak to those issues that you have concerns about, just in a casual environment. And so simply, there's any number of ways to handle citizen, interaction with citizens, but that is certainly probably the number one thing that I spend time doing the most. I would rather spend time with a citizen explaining something in full detail if they need it, or even in a truncated manner, so that they have clarity when they leave. I believe that clarity is what most people want. They want to understand, they want to be heard, and simply, that's my time to spend with you.
Okay. Roxanne, I think you had a question.
Roxanne, Roxanne Stryker, 11 Sam Best Drive. And I just want to say, I'm just very, very grateful that we had such a good group of qualified candidates come today. And so I was just thinking, and the questions we asked earlier were all pre-planned, so this is mine for, as a citizen. You've all had a lot of experience with a lot of different jobs and a lot of different places. I would just like to have each of you just think of one thing, big, little, whatever, where you were, after you did it, you were really proud of what you did, just an accomplishment you made that you're very proud of.
Okay, let's see. Who goes first this time? I think Shawna, you do.
In the city of Lamisa, they did not have their own water supply. And so when, once I had been there for about six months, I said to the mayor, I said, we need to do something about this permanently, a 50-year, 75-year, 100-year fix to the problem. And after working there for four years, I was able to garner the funds through USDA Rural Utilities Services to put in a, goodness, a water tank, if you will, but a very large water tank. It's the width of three football fields, and it keeps three weeks of water on hand for the city. So when their water supply diminishes because of a water break, or the line coming in from Lubbock, the water supply, if that breaks, they still have three weeks of water on hand. And so I know that when I left Lamisa, I left them 50 years to the better.
Okay, Taryn, share with us your most proudest accomplishment.
So a lot of the accomplishments here, you guys can see, they're parked in our bay, we wear them, they're out front. You see that. The ones you don't see, the intangibles, are probably more significant oftentimes. And among those, my work with the county, both on our wildland group that I spearheaded and formed the wildfire work group for Bell County and the Bell County Fire Chiefs Association. In that capacity of our, my relationship as your chief with the county, we've done some great things. One of those is for you guys, remember the Oakmont Park Fire? Yeah, okay. Up until about January of last year, every single fire of that type was called a grass fire. Didn't matter if it was in the grass, in a football field, the median on the side of the road, or in the trees or threatening homes, it was called a grass fire, and it got the same response, a brush truck. That was not the right fit for our community. Wildfire is our biggest risk, and rather than just saying, hey, we're going to develop a concept and a thing that's a one-size, you know, one-size-fits-one-size, just from Morgan's Point, we said, let's look at this on the grander scale. So I went to the county and myself, the county fire marshal, the emergency management coordinator about Reinhardt, the chief from Slatto, chief from Southwest Bell, and a couple of other chiefs from Sparta, met together for months on end, and we developed a new call type that is a WUI call, Wildland Urban Interface. And so Morgan's Point, we did that, and what that's brought about is if we drop a Wildland Urban Interface call, that means we have a couple of homes, three or more homes immediately threatened by wildfire. We get a completely different response, not just a brush truck. We're going to send everything we've got at it, and as you guys know, volunteer world, that could be three people, could be 10 people, could be no people, hopefully not, but we're also going to get a response. It's a much more robust response from the city of Temple, the city of Belton. And to take that one step further, we've subdivided our area into 11 different, what we call fire boxes. There's nine in the city and there's three in the county. And so our areas become much more specific with where our resources come from. We're grinding that ax right now with AMR, and if you're on council, you probably know what I'm talking about. But we're, we've made so many strides that we now have a more comprehensive response to our wildfire threat that involves partner agencies, and that's something I'm proud to say that I did with Bell County. And currently in progress right now, I'm working with the commissioner's court to help with the county funding, and that's something I think we'll see come to fruition next year, where we use a little bit different mechanism to provide county funding because that's been dormant for about six years. So my work with the county as your fire chief that's in turn helped us as a community and made us a safer place to live, the stuff you guys don't see is what I'm honestly most proud of.
Okay. Dennis? Well, if I had to name a project, I would use the police headquarters in Colleen. It was an 80,000 square foot facility, 27, a little over $27 million. It was, on paper, is probably the one I would say is probably the most significant I've accomplished. I'm more thankful for it than I was proud of it. I am more proud of the investment I made in others. There's a lot of people in their careers at various stages that you can help along as a senior executive and really make a difference in their lives. You won't see it perhaps right away, but as you see their career progress and the things they do, to me, I get more pride or satisfaction, if you will, out of that kind of investment. Other questions? Anybody? Okay, here we go, chief.
Sorry about that. We have a flyer.
So I'm Matthew Shuzi, I'm the chief of police for the city. And we got to sit earlier today and discuss in detail individuals, individual questions with the candidates and so did the council. So they know that I only ask pretty much the hardest questions that they're. We talked a great deal, and just most recently on Roxanne's question of what would be considered one of your, like, accomplishments? So we talked in detail about that as well, but for the residents sitting in this room, accomplishments are great and everybody wants to pat their shoulders, but what, I want you to describe to them, what has been one of your greatest weaknesses professionally and personally?
Okay. Taryn, you get to go first on this one. And try, let's try to do it one, one, just one, what, let's, say that question one more time.
What would be one of your, consider one of your greatest weaknesses?
Okay.
Okay. The trust but verify. I've been burned by that a couple of times. I'm not going to tell you that I'm going to become less trusting. I'm maybe a little bit smarter about the way I do things now. I will extend trust and grace and understanding to somebody until the cows come home. But I've, you know, that's one thing that I think, a little bit of maturity, a little bit of difference in different places I've worked. We want to assume that all people are good and all people are well-intentioned. As much as it's my job to be nice and kind and all that stuff, there is a time where we have to call, you know, spade to spade and realize that we have a bad situation. That brush truck a few years ago would be an example of that, and it's time to dig in and go to war. And so my weakness in that respect has been, over time, just letting things go a little bit too long and not having a good trigger point, saying, hey, we need to stop and we need to take action. That's been less, that's been more outside of my scope as emergency work, more in my personal life than my professional life, but in my professional life, there have been times where I maybe got given an opportunity to somebody to succeed, and they've taken advantage of that. Still going to give the opportunities, but I'm aware of that, and that's one of the things I personally have to work on in my daily life, so.
I would say the biggest weakness I have is I have, and I'm not paranoid about it, but I am very adamant about not failing to achieve a goal or objective. And it's not where I'm, I'm a little OCD, but not too much, but I definitely want to see the results that we are committing ourselves to. And that's probably the, it's more of an anxiety issue because I don't want to let anybody down. You can't be all things to all people, I know that, but you should be able to at least carry out what you say you're going to do. So that's part of, as far as the failure in that regard, when I was younger, young executive, I trusted the people and I was, 99.9% of the time, they did everything they were supposed to. But there was one time on one project that meant a lot to me, that we were seeking national accreditation, and I didn't do the things I'd normally customarily would do, which was to, I want to see the reports, I want to talk to individuals, I want to see something besides someone just telling me something. But I took the word for it, and it come back to burn me. Like I said, I was young and didn't realize how much of impact, because I was hearing one things from staff, my command staff, and then when the independent auditor came in and gave me a different version saying, well, that's not the case, this is where you're at. So then I had a meeting with the staff saying, why am I here and why is there such a dichotomy between the two? Why are we not where we should be, like you led me to believe? And long story short is, I took ownership because it was my lack of follow-through where I should have been at that stage in my career. So I don't rely on that anymore. I will still hear everybody out, but I'm going to see something, because if it's not measured, it's not getting done, generally speaking. And as far as in a personal life, I think if I had one biggest failure is that I didn't[1798.54] spend enough time with my kids when they were growing. That's probably the biggest thing I regret, but as an adult, trying to make some time, make sure I do spend time with them and with the grandchildren as well.
Well, I'll start out with balance. As one of the weaknesses I have, I find that I work quite a bit, and so in my professional life, I will say with my husband here, he knows that I have to find balance for my personal and professional life. And so sometimes he'll tug on my ear and say, hey, come home for dinner. But in terms of the work, a weakness that I discovered early on was needing to listen to all viewpoints and bring those in and really consider and take them to heart. And as I expressed today to the City Council, I made a very bad selection one time that was an employment selection and did not listen to all of those concerned that were giving input into that situation. And so I've learned from that and taken that to heart, to really take everything that I hear to heart and balance and weigh things. And finally, investing in education and opportunities to better oneself for staff is something that I will always give opportunities. So I've not necessarily taken those opportunities for continuing education when I knew someone else needed it more in a certain area. And so I then go back and take it on myself, on my own time, to acquire those, that knowledge that I may have missed. And so I always want to give employees that opportunity to grow in their career field, grow with their knowledge and competencies, and bring those efficiencies back to the community.
Okay. We're out of time for the questions this evening, and thanks again for everybody coming out tonight. But what we want to hear now is the closing comments from the three finalists for the City Manager position. And Shawna, I think you went first in the introductions, and Taryn went last, so we'll start with Taryn. And you've got three minutes to talk about anything you want to talk about, but give us some closing comments as your last impression of the City Council and the citizens on who you are and maybe why you want to be City Manager of Morgan's Point Resort.
Thank you, Ken. First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and counsel for your due diligence in this process and clear communication. So I mean, you guys have all been great. This has been one of the more interesting processes I've been through. I've been through a couple of different hiring processes like this in my life, and this has been done very well. At the end of the day, I want, if I'm selected, and I want to be selected for the, I want to be selected because you guys have seen the work I'm capable of performing. You know that where I may lack some experience or lack education, I have more than made up for that in other aspects of my life and other aspects of experience and diversity and experience. I think that will play out and carry me very well here in the city. I have great relationships with city staff, with city council. It's been true for several councils. I can't think of a single council I've had an issue with. And really, nobody should have an issue with the council. I mean, we may disagree on things, but if you do pick me, you're going to find someone that's very balanced, very concerned with the community. Also, you know, it's hard not to focus on the home field advantage. I know the players, I know the history. As we're driving through, doing our city tour today, I can tell you in 2016, some of the decisions that were made back on the development over here with Camp Kachina, I can tell you what, why some things have happened in the city, and I can tell you what's worked and what hasn't. So some of the learning curve that I'll have to do with some of the financial aspects and stuff of the job, I will certainly be able to more than make up for the fact that I will be able to hit the ground running. I'm a consummate student. I actually just completed an associate's degree in EMS at 50 last year, not because I needed to, just because I wanted to, and I had some time, I thought, didn't really have the time. You can expect that if I am put in this position, I will figure out where exactly my weaknesses are, and I will fix those. If I have strengths that I can offer everyone else, and I'm sure I do, I will also figure out what those are, and I'll share those with staff and with residents. I'm excited about what Morgan's Point has to offer. I led off with the fact that instability in this job, or this position rather, in the time I've been here. I'd like to end that. You know, I was asked in the City Council interview, how, where do you see yourself in three to five years? And honestly, hopefully, it's still here. It would put me in a 10-year trajectory. I'd like that very much. I've got some things going on with my kids graduating and moving on in life, and I'm at a place where I can take a little more risk and have a little more time to devote to work. So I think it'd be, I don't think there's much left to be said. I think you basically answered very good questions, and if you have anything offline, again, feel free to reach out to me. So, thank you.
Okay, Dennis, if you want to close by, again, telling the great more about who you are and why you want to be the City Manager of Morgan's Point Resort.
Right. Well, first of all, I'd like to say, reiterate what has already been said, is that it's been a great process, it really has. You've got a good council. I can tell you, they are certainly focused in on seeing the community move forward. They care, they collaborate well from what I've seen, and I've seen a lot of councils. I've worked with a lot of councils. The process for hiring was super. It was streamlined, informative. We knew as candidates, I'm sure that everybody feels the same, that it was a good process, and I thought that was well done. You're going to be fine, whether, you know, the big thing is, is keep the eye on the prize, which is moving your community forward, not losing who you are as a community. I think you'll be fine. I think I could be a contributing factor to that. I think I can facilitate some good outcomes, but there's, that's subjective on my part. You have to decide for you as a council, what is best for you and your community, and finding that right person to give that end result that you're looking for. And so I think it's in good hands, whoever gets it. I'm confident, and I actually respect the process. And what council's doing is not an easy job, but it is an important one, and that will determine how well you move this community forward in the way you want it to be moved. And thank you very much. It's been a great experience.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Shawna?
Certainly. I would like to say that if I am selected as the candidate of choice to move forward as City Manager, that I would first like to express, number one, thanks to the process. The process was very smooth, just as my colleague has said, and the process demonstrates that this community is committed to furthering the future of your community in a positive manner, in a balanced approach, a smart approach, a balanced approach, whether it be bringing in some sales tax and some businesses into the area and growing that sales tax a little, or whether it be improving amenities, whether it be improving the amenities that everybody has, which is your parks, your marina here, all of those are very important. So whatever the goals and objectives are that you've expressed to your City Council, I would like to facilitate those outcomes as well, and I believe that my background will benefit this community. And I hope that if I'm not the candidate of choice, that I get to hear great things about what Morgan's Point is doing in the future.
Okay. So we're done for this evening. I think that Shawna, Dennis, and Taryn have all done a great job. Let's give them a round of applause, would you? Okay. And none of the three are going, they're not going to run out the door at this point, so they're going to hang around. If you want to approach them with your individual questions and concerns, then I'm sure they'll be glad to visit with you after we kind of adjourn this meeting. So I'll turn it over to you, Ryan, for your comments.
I just want to say thanks for everybody coming out. If you're online, thank you too. If you have feedback, please feel free to send that to any of the council members. You can send it to me. I am going to compile any feedback I get and provide it to the council this weekend. So if you could do that by tomorrow afternoon, that would be greatly appreciated. But we'll meet again Monday in executive session at 5:00 PM to discuss this a little further and hopefully have a candidate selected. But we value your feedback, we want your feedback, we appreciate you coming out, and I think if you can provide some feedback for us to take, or for the council to take into consideration, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay.